Okay. I will now call in to order. The planning commission. At four P M. Today is Monday, November twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. Staff, could you do a roll call?
Commissioner Stephanie then.
Yeah.
Commissioner Anne Warman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jerry Fugic.
Here.
Commissioner Cora Lozaren.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Howard.
Here.
Commissioner John Thompson.
Here.
And then Commissioner John Greger.
Here. Okay.
I am now calling to order.
The planning commission. At four P M. Today is Monday, November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Staff, could you do a roll call?
Commissioner Stephanie then.
Yeah.
Commissioner Anne Warman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jerry Fugic.
Here.
Commissioner Cora Lozaren.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Howard.
Here.
Commissioner John Thompson.
Here.
And then Commissioner John Greger.
Here. We could all, Dan. As everybody had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Staff, are there any communications?
No.
The public comments. Is there any unfinished business?
No.
New business?
Mr. Chair members of the board, tonight we have S C J present here. They are gonna be giving you updates about the housing action plan. And the work they're going through for it, and after that, we can go over the annexation.
Okay. As everybody had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Staff, are there any communications?
No.
Public comments. Is there any unfinished business?
No.
New business?
Mr. Chair members of the board, tonight we have S C J present here. They are gonna be giving you updates about the housing action plan. And the work they're going through for it, and after that, we can go over the annexation.
Okay.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, my name is Dan Penrose, I'm C J Lyons, I'm joined today by Alton Paulson from our office. Lacy, I think if you recall, a little bit earlier this fall, we had a conversation about our public engagement. And on the conference, so this afternoon, we're here to brief you on the status of the housing needs assessment. Which is a front-end housing action plan, so I believe you have that draft in front of you, we have a whole still need new on that report, so this is kind of an in-process. I think that report is due at the end of the year, so we'll wrap it up on the end of December. Hopefully you had a chance to look through some of the document, I'm gonna hit a few highlights. That document, I won't go into any more detail at a time unless you want to do and answer questions and have a dialogue as much as you were interested in that. We have about a six-phase process here with the housing action plan. We kicked off in the fall, outreach here, I mean, you know, I had some interviews with some folks earlier this fall. We had a workshop with you, and so now we are into the drafting of the plan. We're gonna update council tomorrow at the public services committee meeting, so they'll be up to speed. The version of this briefing tomorrow. So. The housing action plan is kind of made up, if you look at that table of contents, which is on the third page. Introduces the subject of housing, and we can get the community profile and a housing inventory. Or we get into the latter parts of the report, we have to do with gap analysis and land capacity analysis. So some of the highlights that I wanted to share with you on the community profile, and this information is predominantly taken from the Office of Financial Management, which is state agency in charge of population forecast, is pretty integral to the Growth Management Act. And they project county and therefore city populations for for purposes of really for revenue allocation, but then it feeds into population as well. It's based mostly on housing, if you talk to the demographers over there. Your staff will give them a little report every March, I believe, like March or April, on the previous year's housing starts and demolitions and permits underway, and they use that to feed into their model. They do that on a county-wide basis, so at Thurston County level, they are assigning a level of population, and then at the T R P C level, which you have representation on, they work through and allocate that across the cities based on projections and forecasts and the previous expectations on population. So that's one of the sources that we have, the other one is the Census Bureau, obviously the census came through a couple years ago and did their their Cottle Census that were they're sending out for, and so they are running a process called an American Community Survey, A C S. And that gives you kind of a rolling five-year counts for population, housing, employment, all of those other things. So we're using that as our primary source to the two pieces. So, starting on this community profile right around page two and page four, we want to talk about Yale population. O F M and based on again that census information. And also what you're showing is projected to increase by over thirteen thousand residents. Anyone have a guess at to the current population of the city?
Six thousand.
Anybody else?
I keep thinking it's five thousand.
Hey, right around ten thousand.
Yeah, because I came in the years.
Yeah, so the current population is right around ten thousand, so smidge over. So the O F M is projecting an additional thirteen in twenty eighteen years, so that's a significant increase. Yale as in total has a younger population and larger household sizes than many places in the county and certainly across the state. Though that that young population, the larger household size predominantly because of the influence of the service member population here, that's what we believe. So that puts a strain on the school district as there's about forty-four hundred members of that twenty forty population who will be under the age of eighteen. So there's some order of magnitude influences from the larger household sizes. Good in the sense that you need fewer housing units to accommodate that population increase, it's a challenge because those housing units are larger and they're filled with most of the school-aged kids, which has got an impact on the school district. So that's kind of a couple highlights on the community profile. Is there anything else that stood out in that community profile, you had a question about, you wanted to ask about on the housing section? We'll be, obviously we'll be around, you can contact us at any point if anything comes up, we're talking staff, or we can dive into something, if there's something in the report in particular that he wants to on the housing inventory section right around page eleven. Housing unit production has kept pace with demand based on what we're seeing. Most of those housing units are newer single-family detached units. They have three to four bedrooms, and their median cost is right around four hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thousand. Pretty significant number. But that's what the new houses are currently listed at. On the workforce profile down around page eighteen. Job density is concentrated in the downtown core along Yale, and there are a couple of focused hotspots. Anywhere in there is fine. So, yeah, that's fine, there's obviously some hotspots in the core, and then on the end, or Walmart and and that master plant community's got some current jobs, mostly from construction right now, with the stuff that's happening out on the side a little bit. Person, Highlands. Most people are commuting from Yale to go to another place there, being here, obviously it's a better community, there aren't enough jobs inside Yale to accommodate all those who and are residents in Yale, I think that's the year twenty-six, I think, if you want to roll down, there might be a input-output model.
Can we go back a little bit to the household?
Yeah. The inventory?
Yeah, the inventory. It was, I found it really curious on that figure fifteen, that according to what you've got here, even people that are making a hundred percent of the median income are still experiencing some of that cost burdens. Is there any explanation for that?
So on fifteen, it was on page ten. Cost burden is a technical definition for spending more than thirty percent of your household income. So, that is getting at whether, you know, you're at risk for displacement, if you were to lose that income, then then the ability of you to retain that that house is is a challenge. Your point is to, you're asking about the people who are at a hundred percent of A M I?
Yeah.
So there's, there's, I don't know whether that there may be about
That seems to be.
About a hundred people or so who are not, who are cost burdened in that thirty to fifty, so I think those are the folks who are right up, right on the edge, who are maybe have a house that's even though they're they're making the average, they're in a house that is more expensive than the average, and so therefore they're spending more of their income on that on that house, and they're right at the edge, so they're, because there's two variables in there, right? You've got that A M I, and then you've got the household price.
Right.
Is that, you can add anything?
Yeah, no, that's pretty accurate.
So, that has to do with the with the cost of the house rise.
Right. That been driven by the increase over the past three or four years in the value of the houses in Yale.
That is from twenty twenty. Specifically, the Department for Housing and Urban Development releases a report that's, I believe, from two thousand fifteen, two thousand nineteen exactly, that assesses the home values and then the income that they're making, and so it is a little older than what we're seeing in regard to the, like, you know, the COVID increases that we saw. But it's still pretty accurate in regard to what we should see going forward after this hump due to the pandemic.
Maybe Commissioner Thompson, what you're, are you getting at how, how did it used to be and how is it now?
Well, basically what I was wondering is, obviously, price of housing has steadily increased out of proportion because of a shortage in housing and some other things. Now the interest rates have gone up, housing now has slowed down, may reverse itself. And obviously, when you're looking at a trend like this, you may get that blip, but you want to make sure it's kind of a straight line, and that may disappear in the future, not be as radical as it is right now. Because housing prices around here probably doubled in the last five or six years, the value of those houses. But I think they're now overly inflated. And now may drop down if the interest rates stay up around seven percent rather than three percent.
I'm curious if we looked at, say, like at twenty fifteen, which would be just outside that six-year timeframe, you were just identifying what this chart would look like, you take a look at that, and just to, how to carry on, would that be pretty easy to find a previous report that had talked about, that C H S would do that? What I don't know is what that would tell us. We could look at it, and I bet it would be, I bet it'd be a little different, I bet your hundred percent A M I would be so high with still your cost burden percent, I bet that you bet where you are on that figure fifteen would be a lot smaller.
More.
Because I think the houses were more
That are too, that seem like an awful
Again, the position that incomes haven't kept up with the housing prices, now you have more people, even though they're still above that the poverty level or that thirty percent of A M I, which is different than poverty level, it's it's still burdened for them even, you know. So I think what this really gets at is more of experiencing tightness in our budgets due to housing costs. And obviously, we didn't even include utilities in here, or taxes, or some of these other things that are influences, these are just straight-up housing prices.
I have one more question, page twelve, it's just for my understanding, a very last sentence in that paragraph, is that the duplexes make up the smallest percentage of unit types that are at one hundred percent occupying with eight units, I don't understand what that means.
Eight units total, and all of them are occupied.
Oh, duplexes.
Yeah, right.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry, I think I will buy that.
Good questions, we definitely are looking for feedback on this and make sure it's understood. Okay, we are under the workforce profile, if that's all right. Talked a little bit about where the job density is created, also focused along downtown, obviously more, and then after plant community. The largest employers government and school district, you can see a few others there, the pop industries in figure twenty-five, which is on or about page see kind of where the spikes are. Okay, those who are the jobs in Yale versus the workers in Yale. Public administration piece on the very end, that's state workers who are commuting.
One of the things I've noticed, there's a lot like data there, and what the graphs represent. A more bold color. Would be bled out, doesn't read very easily.
You're saying the labels on that vertical?
Right. It's, I've seen it on quite a few of the other items, it needs to be
Black.
Blacker.
Yeah. Yep. Industry growth at table six, this is on the pack mount workforce there, the consortium for our county. Pretty, pretty straightforward, those numbers aren't really varying too much, other than the job growth in accommodation and food sources is not going to be nearly as as robust as it has been for its five years of this report, the latter, the latter five years, it's gonna be slowing down quite a bit. That's for, that's for our region. That figure twenty-six gets at that commuting patterns in Yale, that's down towards page nineteen, this right there, that's just the, that's pretty typical way for Census Bureau to show who's coming in to commute, who's going out to commute, and who's already here, who's working here, that's kind of what that thinks. Live, live inside Yale and work inside Yale. Only about three hundred, about three hundred jobs for the folks who live here. A whole lot, so there's certainly some strategies that can be narrated out that would talk about a greater level of internal economic, you know, development and economic business activity in order to allow people who wanted to work here, live here, to work here. That's pretty consistent across all cities.
You're talking about working here, three hundred jobs. Now, the old school and the, basically the city, maybe more than that, or I'm trying to think how many employees, the old school district probably has maybe four hundred employees. But you're saying that the two hundred ninety-eight is the total number of jobs available in the city? Walmarts, grocery stores, everything else, or is that, am I misreading this, or?
Those are jobs that specifically Yale residents actually work who live
Okay, because there may be outside people working for the school district, that's your input of that, basically. Only six hundred or more coming in, yeah, okay, understand.
I just have a question, I mean, what is control do you actually have over that, I mean, you can build the company, set it up in town, that doesn't mean people qualified or interested in that work. Live in town fairly, I just wonder how much influence something like this would have, because you can't control some of that.
Right, I think that's a fair point, I think there's only so much government to encourage business to locate within its boundaries, and every you know, back in the day, they used to call it chasing smoke stacks, where, you know, economic development professionals are always trying to get that that industry over there to move to our town, you know, to provide jobs. They don't chase smoke stacks anymore, you know, it's all like I T server farms and stuff like that, but I think the point that what government can do is provide space for businesses, you know, and and make sure that it's a friendly business climate, which I know the city is, and make sure that there's available land for both those commercial operations, as well as make sure there's sufficient land for residential, so that those businesses who are here, like the school district, there are places for those teachers to find homes in your community. I know there are, there are a good number of teachers and support staff who are commuting in from other places in the county. So everyone's kind of passing, and there's, there's a lot of reasons people choose communities, I'm not saying that but I think it's, I think it's mostly a land supply.
What I think of is the communities that are they've, they've grown in terms of the type of housing that's so expensive that the people that they really need to provide some of the services, whether it be the food and and accommodations or in retail, they can't get those people because they don't have housing anywhere close by.
Right.
And that's something that this type of diagram or the analysis would show. I know about that from my daughter in Southern California that we're faced with that.
If you scroll down just a little bit, I think the last sentence on this page says just that, which is according to the interviewed school system has staff that have to commute to other, from other places because they
Curiosity question, I'm just sitting, looking at the planning commission, and half of us don't live in the city. Yale has a fairly small footprint, the urban growth boundary. But before the Urban Growth Act took place, there was a great deal of development in Clearwood and all these outside places. You still have, and I'm talking about, I don't know an exact comparison, but if there's ten thousand in Yale, probably within seven miles of here, there's another twelve thousand living outside that is more influential than in some other areas where the city, you know, is well-developed, and then outside, it's hard to have all those houses. And I don't know how that impacts, because we're showing them coming in, but they're not coming in from well, some are, but they're not coming in from Olympia and everything, they're coming in from five corners, you know, you go past five corners to four corners, that's all now outside of the area, you go to Lawrence Lake, there's hundreds of homes there. You look around, you go to Clearwood, you go to Whitewater Estates, you look at all of those areas are very close. We're thinking, well, they're outside of our area, but we're influencing them totally, and we're the only ones influencing them. They're gonna come to Walmarts from Lawrence Lake before they go to Lacy. And so I don't know if that's important, I don't know how you look at those demographics in a small town the size of Yale, well, I'm sorry, city, it's a city now, it used to be a town when I first got here, but a city of six, you know, ten thousand an outside influence of maybe fifteen thousand that are within short driving distance, and the only reason I'm bringing that up is we're saying, well, we got to address our streets and everything for our ten thousand people. We actually have to address for the twenty-five thousand that actually look at Yale, and your mailing address is Yale outside there. I don't know how we do that in development.
To consider is that, as we get into the rest of the report, and the number of houses that are projected for the influx of population into the city. Who's gonna more than double?
Yes.
And it's just, it's something to recognize that that doesn't state what's gonna happen outside the city as well, but to, I think we've got to recognize we're gonna have some big challenges.
That's why, that's why I was thinking of that, is that if I just put a wall all the way around city of Yale and say, well, ten thousand people are allowed here, the rest of you are just visitors, and you're just coming here. And you don't drive through, okay, that includes us, that is sitting at the table here, most of us.
That's a great segue into that point, if you scroll down to page twenty-one, table eight, it's right at exactly that. So there's that ten, six seventeen number, or a population estimate, that that about two thousand, thousand, twenty-three by twenty forty. And we run the math, which is people per household, number of households, building a vacancy rate, because they're always just going, it needs to be that for market purposes, as well as just how things happen, you're right around four thousand housing units by twenty forty.
That just addressed. This urban area enough as.
Yeah, that's correct, I mean, you're not, you're not required to plan for areas outside your city. That, the, the county has a, has a growth factor that's baked into their numbers that they're having to address. On a, mostly on a five acre lot basis, you know, it's, it's kind of how their, their zoning works. But, yeah, Commissioner, you're right, they're all coming into Yale for services or for school, right, I mean, there are a variety of things, but then. Their population's actually counted in the county, or in some cases Pierce County, I mean, folks from McKenna, or even Roy are coming down here. I think.
Bigger problem than. Then, I mean, if you can find it just too strictly the urban growth area, we're. We're going to have to address the problem, but it's going to be a bigger problem.
You look at the Yale School District, it wraps around the Rainier School District. So you look at the geographic area and all the people there that are using services, let alone Rainier, which uses all our services. Because what have they got, the dollar store in there, now that's a big place, and it's.
I, I think I remember that Yale Community Schools is one of the largest in the state.
No.
It's transportation.
And transport, well, maybe transportation, but I'm wrong.
Miles, no, no, not population at all, geographic reach and like number of miles for their buses, I think that's what we heard.
Transportation.
Their buses are putting more miles on their vehicles than almost anywhere else, just because of how far.
Yeah, the number of the schools are outside of the urban growth boundaries.
Yeah, school, school districts don't have to follow, you know, corporate city limits, but it's sure help, sure helpful when they do. So this is, I think this is probably the, the, it's not a aha moment, because I think we sort of knew some of this, but it's really, this is the, the crux of the, the housing needs assessment, this is kind of taking us down that pathway about the. The so what, so we have all this population, so we have all these unit types, at the end of the day, we're, we're going to need to find spots for about 3,900 homes. To accommodate population of about 14,000 additional people at about three and a quarter persons per house, which is higher than normal, most places are. 25 or 2.7 or 3.1, 3.25 is pretty, you know, robust number of persons per household, so, and again, it's that. Houses and now what we're thinking about school demand on the facilities and, you know, what the schools will need for, for kids. So this, once we have this number, this 4,074. We then start looking across the landscape for places that can accommodate that type of growth, based on where we're at right now. So that's the next, the next section, we, we, this link, it's just on the next. So we're starting to assess zoning. And residential zoning. This is, figure 29 is your zoning. 09 is, is the, you know, districts and the residential density, both read out of code. And this is where we're headed. You're applying, looking at the environmental suitability for 4,000 units across your landscape in the next 20 years, 18 to 20 years. And that's, that's where we're going to get to with this vacant, underutilized land environmental constraints, and then striking to our conclusions for how, how this might be accomplished.
That's the only drawback that I see in this study, I was so looking forward to that conclusion.
There, sorry.
And it wasn't there.
It'll be a Christmas gift.
It's intriguing, how do you fit, what is it, the, the 10 pounds into a five pound bag?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you do have a lot of area in that future master plan.
Say your back's pretty big.
Huge out there, and that was originally. The concept of that, that was three or 4,000 units to be built into that plan, of course, then it fell through. Because the city did annex that, and it's now part of the urban growth, there is that space available. To probably meet this demand of 2040. In construction, they'd have to build new schools, parks, everything there.
Yeah, and the master plan has that in there, we, we've looked at that, I'm sure staff, you know, is aware that, that master plan has some commercial, some retail, it's got a new road network. You know, it's got a lot of different density types, not just detached single family, but some. And mixed, missing middle, mixed densities as well as a parent, mold the family, so it's, some of the. Early numbers or the early plans that we've seen on Thurston Highlands had, had it all. And I believe you now have enough water to accommodate that growth, it's just a matter of. What all that, what all that means to the rest of the city and, and. It's not super convenient to walk from those areas to, you know, to the downtown core, which is why I think the master plan had its own, had envisioned its own kind of center. So we're learning more. Happy to take any comments from you in the interim, if you have specific questions or suggestions on the draft housing need analysis. Welcome those.
Right, because I'm talking so much, but, but what do you think that occurs to me, that I, I'm curious if you're going to address this. Looked at the size of the families and the number of young people out there, of children under, under 18. In terms of the influx of the new people that would make up these homeowners that would take on the new homes. For climate change. There was a seminar that some of us attended, I think it may have been five or six years ago. That talked about this area as being one of the few areas that was not predicted to have as many climate events. Drastic climate events, therefore it would be an area that. Climate. What would you call it? Or, you know, people who, not refugees from Ecuador, but refugees from Georgia or from. Florida would, would migrate here, given the timeframe. Is the next 15 years or so, that is the timeframe when a lot of, of the most serious. Patterns of, of coastal lowlands flooding and such are going to be. Plus the droughts and such. Did you incorporate any of that possibility? Into the projections, are you relying on the Thurston County projections of, you know, the growth? And so maybe they are, maybe they're taking into consideration the number of. Home refugees are just migration could occur.
Can't, I can't speak to the specifics of Thurston County's model. I'm, I would, I'm pretty sure the state demographic is aware of those types of trends. Even when we do hiring for our firm, I've, I've heard people say that, that they want to leave Arizona, or they're ready to leave New Mexico or. Or Mississippi because of some of those, those reasons, so I, I think it's, that's a fair point, I don't, we certainly didn't. Build in any other factors into ours, ours is fairly straightforward, you know, we know the county number, kind of know where the city's at, we know how fast you've grown over the last number of years. The, it's a very, fairly straightforward linear projection for us in this, in this exercise, all of these. These numbers are, you know, they're guesses, you know, and so I think it's. It's been shown to be, it's better to kind of pick the, the, the medium to high versus the medium to low as far as the growth rate, because. That way you always have that market factor built in, because what happens is if the market gets behind, it's really hard to catch up on the supply side. So part of our effort here is to make sure we are looking at that 3876 number, almost 4,000 units, and making sure that the cities. Bake that into its zoning maps and into its code, so that they can, that you can get there and. That they're not all, I mean, they're not all the same unit type, because. You've got 4,000 single family homes, home sizes right now, that the lot size are about 7,000 square feet. So if you multiply 4,000 times, 4,000 units times 7,000 square feet. Come up with a, a big number, and I, I thought it was close to. 100 acres, was it 100 acres, it's a big number, maybe 600 acres, it was huge, so if you just replicate what's going on. In, in West Yale right now, that you're going to see that density like all throughout the west side in order to pick up that 4,000 units, so. The, the question is, not only how to accommodate the growth, but, you know, where. All of those things, so, so the, the short answer is we'll, we'll bake that in, but I think the state's paying attention to it.
So it's, is the numbers you're using probably already have baked in?
I, potentially from the state level, I don't know about the, the TRPC or the county, TRPCs who handles, Thurston Regional Planning Council handles the growth. Numbers for everybody in this, in the county, they just finished up a sustainable Thurston plan, and so I think some of you, you know, are familiar with that, that would probably have a better gauge of. How they're building in this kind of climate migrancy from other places. But I know that they have a focus on, you know, walkable communities that aren't reliant on cars, that cannot be served by transit, because they have sufficient density and so that there's a variety. Density type, needs types to facilitate those types of support.
Thank you.
The big thing is, I think you're, there's a lot of great information in here, but it's hard to read, because of, you know, light colors, if you. Boulder, the map there with zoning on it. It's, it's, it looks like a very pretty quilt, but if you want to figure out what's in there, and what's being said, forget it, you're not going to be able to read it. So it needs to be. Either somewhere where people can read what you have, because.
Yeah, you got it. So the, the last, the last three pages of the report, at least on my side, are listed as appendix. We will have full-size maps in there, as well as not just a citywide map, but kind of specific target areas where, if you accommodated. That's our intent for say, appendix three. So keep your eyes out for that. Thanks for that, that comment.
In keeping with what Anne was talking about. Looking at the state of Florida. Highest point in the state is 300 feet above sea level. Most of the area, once you get down below Daytona, a lot of it below sea level with. Build up on the coast. If the sea level goes up, we're going to have to bring in a new state, so we can, because the Atlantic's. That part of Florida into Georgia and the rest of them, because Florida's not going to be, it'll be underwater. And those people are going to have to have a place to live.
I can laugh anytime somebody tells me they're moving to Florida, I just think, are you crazy? With the hurricanes and the constant flooding, the constant rebuilding, that's.
But they are.
Our next step is for you is, we are going to deliver the final public participation plan to staff by the end of the month. We, this draft will go final by the end of December, and then we'll begin working on the housing action plan in the winter and spring, that's where we're heading. Okay.
Compliment you on your work.
We'll come back and if you have any questions, let us know, otherwise we'll keep plugging away and. Send your questions to staff and we'll do our best to answer those, if you have anything in particular.
Appreciate this very much.
Yes, yes, many, many decades ago, I used to do this kind of stuff, I realized and recognized how much work you guys had to put in.
Was that drafted the report, so get her credit for that.
Very good.
The information that you're providing actually defines the areas where the houses could go. That well informs work that we're doing on the parks board to determine where some of our new parks. Where you go, and so the timing of that, you'll have information to us by the end of December. As much, when do we get the information that says where would the. Where could these homes go, like you said, you know, where are the places where I'd do more, most likely.
Is there a timeframe that is particularly, I know RCO is looking for their.
No, I just need a, I need sort of a ballpark, so that, because the mayor was going to kind of one of those meetings, and at least I could inform him of when we're going to have enough information to say where we should be.
Do you want to work with staff on when you, you know, we can see if we can move some things around to accommodate something like that?
So it would be in the spring, but, but I'll let.
The housing needs analysis, which is what we're viewing right now, our assessment goes back and forth, which, anyway. It will be, the final draft will be to you guys by December 30th, that the latest, or whatever last day of December it is, 31st, or, anyway. So that will have a land use analysis, which I think is what you're really looking at, let's see, and it should have a map that will say, like, kind of, these are the. Undeveloped areas, stuff like that, so it might not be as comprehensive as you're looking for, in which it might be in the final draft of the actual housing action plan. But at least that might give you a good understanding of, hey, these are the spots that we should probably be looking at.
That's a good point, because we as well have to do a strategy level, saying where would we go, how much, and then the next level. When, when we target these. That first level sounds like we may have enough to start after December 30th, to at least say what, in terms of strategically. What do we need to consider?
Very, very coarsely, we're going to look at maps that show where units already are, and where vacant lots are, and. Overlay the zoning on top of it, so we can get a sense of how much each portion of the community can accommodate as far as growth, based on your existing zoning. That's going to be the level that we'll be at first, and then the next step will be, you know, is that the way it should be, and i- if not, or if there's modifications, what would our recommendations and strategies be to that? Okay, that part, that second part will come later, the first part, we could probably give you some preliminary sense of, you know, 1,200 over here, 1,500 over here, 9,000 over there.
I want to wait, before we actually try to say recommend purchasing or recommend building, to wait for that second one, because that gives us a sense of, of how are things, where would they most likely?
And the plan isn't going to by itself change any zoning, so anything that you want to do different, you'd have to look at the strategies and then follow that up with comp plan amendments or zoning code changes.
One other item. Being retired military, you always know about the lack of housing for military. The problems that are causing this, and I have been in contact with a US representative who wants to introduce some legislation to help the military. For their housing stake, will this report be of any use? Help with that?
I think it certainly could, I don't, I don't know, your community connector would be a good, a good spot for that, I think you have, you have first group as your community connector. Though I think you could start there, there's other groups in the community, in the region, South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, it's a good resource. And then, you know, whatever, what are the congressman is, is, is talking about, but off, off installation infrastructure is a pretty. Important topic, and there is, there is increasingly amount. Increasingly, there are monies for those types of things, where in the past, you only use money on the base from the law and stuff, so. I think, I think your point is, is also well taken, that there's, I've always thought there would be, it'd be pretty cool for a community to host. A complex for, you know. E2, E3s, or, or one of the no twos, you know, it's kind of junior, junior grade. Listened and officers off, off the installation without, without too much trouble, everybody knows what the VAH is. In the residential and the rental community, and they're kind of targeting that cost of, of their unit, so. Add some supply to that, I think.
I just, I was looking at this as maybe a vehicle for that, I know, on one of the other committees, I'm on. This has been brought up, has the lack of housing available for the military. And somebody, our neighbor, is, there's two of them, he, the two of them are dentists. And young airmen could not find housing in the area, so they just let him live there with his family until he was able to find housing. But this is not the exception, this is the rule, almost like right now, and that's why. But this is not the exception. This is the rule almost like right now. And that's why. The US representative from the area around Port Louis wants to introduce legislation to help this. And I didn't know this would be a vehicle that would help her push this through. Thank you. I guess on new business. Area around the of the petitioning of annexed property and then we will go to the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chair, member of the board, and I time women's pocket box. The annexation petition will be received from. The first one is property located at nine eight one nine Grove Road Southeast. Danny Blisio submitted a request to circulate the petition for annexation. Young City Council met on September thirteenth. Yeah, and its regular meeting and approved the request to circulate the petition. He submitted his petition signed by the owners of at least sixty percent of the value of the property on November fifteenth. And we sent that petition to Pearson County Assistant Office. And they reviewed the petition and followed by issuing the required declaration of petition sufficiency on November sixteenth. Here you can see basically the property that we are talking about. The green area, dark green is the city limits. The property is twelve point fifty-three acres and contains a single family home and two more wine homes. Total asset value of the parcel is four hundred eighty-seven thousand and five hundred. Like the property is sharing two borders with city limits. Next slide please. City of Yelm comprehensive plan and joint plan with Thurston County designates this parcel as moderate density residential. And open annexation, the zoning of this parcel will be moderate density residential R six. Meaning that they can have up to six dwelling units created. Next slide, thank you. The area of proposed annexation is a single parcel surrounded on two sides by the existing city, young city limits. The configuration is a logical extension of the city limits and would not create any islands or illogical boundaries. The next property we have here is a property located at ten one four three Grove Road Southeast. Danny Jones submitted the request to circulate the petition for annexation. Young City Council met on September thirteenth and approved the request to circulate annexation petition. He then submitted a petition signed by the owners of at least sixty percent of the value of the property on November fourteenth. We sent out that petition to Thurston County Assistant Office. For the review and they followed by declaration of petition sufficiency on November sixteen. Next slide please. Here you can see the property. It's sharing a one border with the city limits. The property is five point. Zero one acres and contains a single family home and some other like. Structures. Total asset value of this parcel is five hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred. Next slide please. City of Yelm comprehensive plan designates this parcel as moderate density residential. Open annexation, the zoning of this parcel will be moderate density residential R six. And as you can see, like, all around it is either R six or is going to be R six when they annex in. The area proposed annexation is a single parcel sharing a border with the city of Yelm. And the configuration is a logical extension of the city limits and would not create any islands or illogical boundaries. Next property is located at fifteen oh three six State Route five oh seven. Pastor Colton Work on behalf of the Yelm Jesus. Name Nicole Son Church submitted the request to circulate the petition for annexation. Young City Council met on September thirteenth and approved the request to circulate annexation petition. He submitted the petition signed by the owners of the at least sixty percent of the value of the property on November fourteenth. He sent out the petition to Thurston County Assistant Office. They reviewed the petition and. They issued declaration of petition sufficiency on November sixteen, which is attached to the staff report. Here you can see the property sharing one border with the limits. Property is nine point seven one acres and is currently vacant. Total asset value of this property is one hundred fifty-six thousand and one hundred. City of Yelm comprehensive plan designates this area as low density residential. Open annexation, the zoning of this parcel will be low density residential R four. And as I mentioned, like it's sharing a border with the city limits. The configuration. Is a logical extension of the city limits and would not create any islands or illogical boundaries. Any questions so far? Next, we have the property located at one sixty-three four five Rainbow Road Southeast. Daphne Anderson submitted the request to circulate the petition for annexation. City Council met on September thirteenth and approved the request to circulate annexation petition. She then submitted the petition signed by owners of at least sixty percent of the value of the property on November sixteen. We sent out the petition to Thurston County Assistant Office. And we received the creation of petition sufficiency on November sixteen. As you can see, this property shares three borders with the city limits. And it's three point forty-four acres and it's currently vacant. So the asset value of the property is ninety-six thousand eight hundred. City of Yelm. Comprehensive plan designates this area as moderate density residential. And upon annexation, the zoning of this parcel will be R six. Slide please. The area proposed annexation is a single parcel surrounded by on three sides by the existing Yelm city limits. The configuration is a is a logical extension of the city limits and would not create any islands or illogical boundaries. Any questions? Next slide.
Could you go back to where it shows where the current boundaries are of the city?
Yes.
And this one just.
Can you go back to the green one?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. This property doesn't have any address right now, but it's on Mansell Court, Southeast. Parcel number two two seven three zero four one zero three zero zero. Glenn Shurno on behalf of GES Land LLC submitted the request to circulate the petition for annexation. Young City Council met on September thirteenth and approved the request to circulate annexation petition. Glenn Shurno submitted a petition signed by the owners of at least sixty percent of the value of the property on November fifteenth. He sent out the petition to Pearson County Assistant Review and received a declaration of petition sufficiency on November sixteen. As you can see here, this property shares like. The orders with the city limits. It's the property is ten acres and it's currently vacant. Total asset value of this parcel is two hundred sixty-three thousand and eight hundred. Comprehensive plan designates this area as low density residential. And as you can see, like majority of that area is going to be, or it is right now, like some of it is. Zones are four and the rest are going to be R four of an annexation. The configuration is a logical extension of the city limits and would not create any violence or illogical boundaries. Here we have the last parcel. It's parcel two two seven three zero four one zero zero zero. Zero four zero. This is also an on address property on Morris Road Southeast. Howard Alexander and Cynthia Sotley submitted a request to circulate the petition for annexation. City Council met on September thirteenth and approved the request to circulate annexation petition. They then submitted the petition signed by the owners of at least sixty percent of the value of the property on November sixteen. And we sent it to Pearson County Assistant Office. They reviewed the petition and issued declaration of petition sufficiency on November sixteen. Here you can see the property. This property is five acres and it's currently vacant. Total asset value of this property is one one four nine hundred. As you can see, this property is not sharing any border with the city limits. But it's the property next to us, the one I just talked about. Yes, it's. Also on on the process of, you know, annexing to the city. So open annexation of that property. This person is going to share a border with the city limit. Then comprehensive plan designates this area also as low density residential. And upon the next station, the zoning of this person will be low density residential R four. Basically went over this. Next slide is. Public utilities. Each property under consideration for annexation is served by water and sewer lines or can have those lines extended to serve the property at time of development. We haven't received any official submittal for development of those properties yet. I know we had pre-sub meeting with a couple of them. They. Not on developing yet, but it's nothing officially yet. And in case they develop in the future, they have to go through the the process for the subdivision. And they also have to extend their water and sewer lines if they don't have it already. And the owner or developer is responsible for that extension. With the city's recent grant of water rights by Washington Department of Ecology, the city can easily handle any new low and medium density residential development. That will take place on these parcels if they're annexed. Next slide please. Transportation staff anticipates that all roads adjacent to these properties will be able to handle the amount of traffic that usual development of such properties would create. And public comments. I actually, we. Advertised basically like the annexation on the local newspaper, Miss Polly Valley News. Online edition on November eleventh and also on the Hart copy on November seventeenth. We also posted a notice on every single property that is requesting to annex. For their neighbors to see that they are planning on annexing. Also posted the notice on city website on November tenth and three public locations at City Hall and. The Public Services Building and the Public Safety Building. We did receive one comment from Member of Public, which is attached to the agenda packet. Staff recommends the approval of this petition and. We recommend that the planning condition send their recommendation to City Council to approve those petitions.
My only comment really is the property off of railway road. That's the only area I'm actually very familiar with. And I would argue that those roads there depending on how many homes, like five. I don't remember how many homes, but those are very narrow and there's a school at the end of one of them. And when the kids are out, the parents block the road. The stop sign intersection that backs up poorly. I would argue that depending on how many homes you put back there, it might need some adjustment on the way it's.
I see. Can you go back to slide fifteen? That parcel in their forty-five Rainbow Road Southeast.
Yeah, so. Without the annexation, I would like to see those roads widen and moved out a little bit. But if they're building more homes back in that area, it is fairly tight. It's not even a large lot, but.
Yes, so. Yeah, if they ever decide to develop, that's gonna be a cause I permit, meaning that it's gonna go front of the human ground here. There's going to be public hearing. After staff. And we are not gonna have any developments if Port Louis can't handle it. So if there's gonna be need for. Expanding the road or launching the road like they're gonna develop a house to do it in advance. You're not obligated to approve it if we can't provide service.
Do we need, do you want the motion tougher or before?
I think it's good to open the public hearing first.
At this time. I would like to open the public hearing. Today, Monday. November twenty-first. Two thousand twenty-two. At. Five zero five. Oh clock PM. These here public hearing is on the annexation. Of those listed under the documents provided to the Yale Planning Commission. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this afternoon? Please click on the raise your hand button or come to the podium. Hearing no. Public comments. I, has there commissioners, any further comments or questions? I now propose this public hearing. There's no testimony at. Five zero six PM on November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Now we'll go back to. Do we need to vote, like, get a motion to forward? Anexations to.
Approve the motion now.
We need a motion to, okay, to this Yelp City Council.
Then we approve it for us.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for is for you.
I would make a motion that we approve and forward the six annexations that were discussed today and then held in the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Been moved consecutive that we approved the document relative to the annexation of the property. Properties listed in our documents, all of paper, six five, I say hi. Motion carry. Okay. Is there any other? I don't know if this.
I don't know if this is a new business or not, but I'm mixing it up. Have you guys noticed, uh, traffic backup along Bible, uh, Young Avenue? People trying to pick up students or something out of the middle school?
The traffic backup you're talking about was for, there was doing a turkey giveaway on the Yale Community Services. And so there was a line of cars backed up all the way to Yale Ave, yes.
I'm myself, man, if that's something for the school, we got to do.
No, no, that was a turkey giveaway. That only happens once a year.
Okay.
Well, look for the ham giveaway for Christmas. It might happen again.
Well, that's a hand giveaway, the other ones are turkey. Okay, uh, any other? Okay, I'll look, uh, the subcommittee report and.
And the, the parks, uh, big events coming up, which is the, uh, weekend, root weekend and December second and. So please make note for any, uh, any grandkids that you have or any other, uh, you know, children that are around. And, um, it should be really quite the, the good event. Share. And, uh, check the, the website because there's other, um, events that are, you know, later in December that are just offshoots of the, the Christmas in the park, uh, would be happening. And, um, the only other thing I can, I'm gonna go on and talk about both the, the stage. Okay, uh, we're looking at the, uh, new design for, uh, the stage, uh, to make, uh, the, the grassy areas in the park being it's sort of an event seating area. And then the stage to be, um, in a similar place to where it is today, but, uh, counted differently. Uh, and so that is going to make some changes to the outbuildings that are there. Uh, to allow more visibility and, and seating across all the grassy area. It'll, it'll mean that the city park will not only have, um, children's play area and the community center, but will be an event area for fairly large events, which we're having now. We're already doing them, uh, with the events in the summer. Uh, but we have a, um, a well-designed stage that to support those events. Uh, and the grassy, so the grassy areas, uh, for seating.
Question, what's the status on the military memorial there that was damaged and was going to be?
Hand that off to, to Cody, he's been.
Yeah, so, um, the veteran memorial was originally designed to be in city park. Um, when we put up the fitness court and we saw the kids climbing, playing on the fitness court. I was hesitant about putting veterans memorial things throughout the park. So what we've kind of done is decided to actually get a new, secure new land and build a memorial park just for the veterans memorial.
Brief, the veterans of foreign wars and the American Legion.
So they have been briefed by the mayor, um, on this idea. And then the idea was also to incorporate a veteran's service hub at this memorial park. So we're kind of in the very early phases. I don't, yeah, I don't want to say where the land is because we're still negotiating.
I just wanted to make sure that they were included because rumors they're gonna show up at the next city council meeting, so.
Yeah, they're showing up at a veterans hub, um, but the memorial is so early. We had, you know, we had one meeting a long, I think you were in that meeting we had.
Jerry was.
Jerry wasn't at me, we had about a year ago to kind of talk about design at the city park. Now we're kind of just looking at property. Once we get a property, then I'll bring the design to the veterans group that I have contact with, which includes them. And then I'll read it to the parks committee. We'll go through that. We're so early phases. I don't want to give anything away to shoot up the price of the land, so.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Any other subcommittee reports? Very young. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, can I say this beforehand? I'm sorry about that. So it was brought to my attention before the meeting that, uh, we may not have room for the December's meeting scheduled for, uh, December nineteenth. Uh, would you like to cancel the December meeting because it's closed to the holiday?
Yes.
Okay, so the next, uh, planning commission meeting would be on January sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty.
Fifteen sixteen. There's not a holiday there, is there?
No, it would be a Monday sixteen.
Yeah, there is a holiday. Martin Luther King Day is on the sixteenth. So I think in the past, we then did it on Tuesday seventeen.
Yes.
No council that day, so that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, certainly, we're good.
The next planning coming meeting would be January seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, now I entertain a motion to adjourn.
You need a second?
I have a second.
A second?
Okay, all favor. Gary, then I'll sit here and see if nobody does it.